I'd like to call to order the August 3, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting for Pottstown Council. Would you rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge to the flag?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Vice President Lebedinsky, anything on infrastructure?
The packet's in the agenda.
Okay. And transportation?
There is no meeting.
No meeting. Efficient methods.
Efficient methods. We had talked about switching our, switching our focus this time from public works to communication plans. Where we're going to go with that. So that's going to start on Monday. So next month I'll have an update.
Very good. Ordinance review, Councilor Prostles not here. You have anything to add to that?
Well, there's some recommendations from the ordinance review committee. We have those lists on the agenda later on.
Okay. Economic development, Ms. Lee Clark.
Good evening.
Evening.
I wanted to share just some of the real estate statistics that are going on in the borough right now. Now, these are actively listed as of August 1st. So we pulled this report two days ago. Now, again, these are actively listed. I am aware of at least one private sale that is going on right now in the downtown. But as far as commercial properties go, there are eight properties for sale. Two of those sales are pending. Three are for sale or for lease, and then 32 are for lease. And those are multiple units. Some of those are multiple unit properties. So we have quite an inventory here that we're looking to get filled. And that leads me to the ordinance review committee that looked at, in particular, how vacant buildings are handled in the future. Because, of course, we're very interested in that. These are only active listings. And we also know that there are properties that have sat for a long time where there is no active or the owners are not acting in goodwill to make sure that they get tenants into those buildings, into those commercial spaces. So I thought that was appropriate to share with you, those figures tonight, so that you would know that. Just an update on 215 South Washington. All of the exoneration has happened. Thank you for your efforts, as well as the school district and the county and the Borough Authority. And I have driven by there on numerous occasions in the last two weeks. And there is lots of activity going on in that property. So I continue, I encourage you to continue to watch that property. And that is my report for economic development. Would you like me to go right on to Land Bank?
Please.
So Land Bank continues with the execution of the agreement with 707 Hamilton. I know that the borough solicitor and the Land Bank solicitor have been working on that, and we hope that we're near the finish line with it.
Very close.
Very close. So last, after the last Land Bank meeting, we did release some information on properties that were listed for the August 11 judicial sale at the county. We encouraged developers and interested investors to come to us with information on those properties if they had any interest. There was a flurry of activity. We are starting to review applications tomorrow. There were four properties that the Land Bank chose to offer out to the public. They were 208 Gable, 421 Hale, and 439 Chestnut, along with 948 Queen. 948 Queen has been continued. So that will not be offered to anyone at this point. However, I did see that it is on Portnoy's list for next month. So that has not been pulled yet.
Okay. Thank you.
That is my report.
Chief Hand in the House? No.
He's in West Pots Grove tonight.
Ah, good. Human relations, Ms. Levin, good.
Good evening, councilors, Council President, Madam Mayor. Women's Equality Day is August the 26th, and this is to commemorate the 1920 adoption of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution, ensuring voting rights for everyone regardless of gender. Today, Women's Equality Day celebrates the achievement of women's rights activists and reminds us of the unique challenges that women face. The Commission participated in National Night Out at the Washington Street site last night, and the Commission's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, August the 9th, at 6:00 p.m. in Council Meeting Room, and all are welcome to attend.
Very good. Thank you. Library, Ms. Lipsky.
Hello, everyone. I have a couple of things I wanted to tell you about what's going on at the library. First off, lots of the patrons and the staff are thrilled about the paving of Union Street. So thank you so much for doing that. We're really excited because we've kicked off our Welcome Back to the Library campaign. Some of you may have received this mail or in the mail. If you haven't received yours and you want one, let the library know. We have plenty at the library that we can give to you. But basically, it's showing you some of the goals that we have for the end of this year. And we're also starting a strategic planning committee that's going to be doing some community outreach. So make sure everybody pays close attention to those dates, because we'd love to have everybody's input. We also have one more week left, a summer reading. It's been a fabulous program with lots of the community taking part in that. We do have a couple upcoming dates. We have an electronic recycling event on Saturday, the 20th, at the library. And we do have a couple of fundraiser nights. We have a fundraiser night at Texas Roadhouse on August 25th. And Dairy Queen, I believe that one's September 7th. And we are also doing, we partnered with Mr. Sticky's in Pottstown to do a sticky bun and cinnamon roll sale. So the last thing I have for you is we are looking for partners for our second annual Health and Wellness Festival. This festival is going to be on September 17th at the library. And we have done this in partnership with the Pottstown Health and Wellness Foundation with a grant for some funding for that. So that's what's going on at the library this month. Hope to see you there.
Very good. Thank you. Let me see. We have Councilor Kirkland.
Yes.
Is he on?
Yes.
Oh, good.
And no report for the month. Thank you.
Okay. Pottstown Schools, Councilor Lindsey. I know, school's not open.
School's out, so no report. No, I do. I have some. Okay. I got a long little list here, so be patient with me, y'all. And it won't be that bad. It's not that bad. Okay. So the HAC Parent Portal is now open for viewing for the chap, for your children's teacher. If you need the link, you can go on to the Pottstown School District website and also Facebook. They have them on social media. If you run into any issues, you can email accesshelp@pottstownk12.org. Be sure to include your name and your child or children's name if you're having a problem. You can also get text messages if you text "yes" to 87569. Okay. The first day of school, this is so exciting. I know you parents are just excited because school is starting now, because I used to when my kids went to school. August 22nd is when school first starts. Fall sports season, Monday, August 25th. It officially starts, the fall sports. You must complete the sports physical packet if you need that. Also, it's on the Pottstown School District site. And you can, and you can go to the school, to the high school main office, and contact the athletic director's office, or trainer's office, or go on the school website. If you have any questions, you can talk to the director, mr.baker@jbaker@pottstownk12.org. I know you seen it on the news in the Mercury that our teachers got a three-year pots, three-year contract raises paid 5.4% each year, which is good. And if you didn't know this, that our teachers are at the bottom of the list in salary in Montgomery County. Let's see. Um, sorry. Oh, on July 26, Laura Johnson and Beth Fielder traveled to Harrisburg for the last day of the school funding case with the Commonwealth Court. They, there was a press conference, and Laura and Beth spoke regarding fair funding, because you know, we still fighting the fair funding for our schools. We did receive some funding for our schools, which we appreciated, but we still looking for the rest of our funding. So I just wanted to throw a shout out to Laura and Beth for their continued efforts for our fair funding. When you're registering your children, make sure you, their shots are all up to date. They're also trying to get parents involved this year. And everything, all that, there's a parent, there's a checklist for the parents, and that's on the Pottstown School District website. Accepting new students for pre-K counts in kindergarten, that's children from four years old by September 1st to attend pre-K, and children five years old by September 1st to attend kindergarten. All the instructions are on pottstownschools.com. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. How about our mayor's report, Stephanie?
Trinida, I have a question first on, for the school district. Yeah. Do you know, have you heard anything about whether they are bringing the walking school bus back?
You know, oh, I seen Matt this morning at the Water, Water Wednesdays. They were at Rupert. And the last time I talked to him, he said they need to have someone who can organize it. They don't have anybody. Because the person that did it, she left before COVID ended.
Oh, okay.
So they're looking into it.
Was that through Pottstown Area Health and Wellness Foundation, or?
Yes, I think so. Mm-hmm.
And for my mayor's report, it is happily sitting on my computer at my desk in Conshohocken, where I just left my office. So I'm not going to try to remember what I did. I would like to report it on Monday, if that's okay. But I will tell you, really, the only thing important from today to Monday is that Trinida is having a block party on Saturday, and it's-
Rain or shine, scatter showers and everything.
And where is it, Trinida?
The 900 block of Spruce Street.
And what do you need us to bring?
Money.
Um, also the car show, and is that evening? And there's a free concert at Rivet. And I did go to National Night Out last night. I unfortunately missed all of the big players that came to the Washington Street location. I went to the first, the other location first, at the church. And that was really nice. They expanded, they had like the whole block down there. There was, I've been going for five years, National Night Out, and this was the most people I have seen in those five years. There were so many people and participating and dancing, and so I really appreciate everyone who put that together and held those events yesterday. The kids looked really happy and well-fed, and everyone was dancing. So, thank you.
Good. So we'll hear from you Monday?
Possibly.
Oh, good. Managers report, Mr. Keller.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. A couple of things for you here tonight. So at this point, we've finalized the RFP for the Hess lot. There were really just some minor changes to that document. The biggest change was the addition of a deadline of October 31st, when we would ask for submissions to be in, into page so that they could start their review. So council's been emailed a copy for the review. And unless there are any suggested changes, we expect to advertise this publicly next week. And if you recall, we went out to bid, I think it was two months ago, for the fixed based operator services at the airport. Unfortunately, we only received one bid, and the bidder's proposal was materially different than the services we requested. So we're pretty much back at square one, and we're going to begin a dialogue with the one bidder, as well as some of the other parties that were interested, to see if we would get better response with some changes to the RFP. And we'll keep everyone posted on that outcome. An update on the grant front. The authority was recommended for funding of 2.75 million for the Montgomery County ARPA for lead line service replacements. So at this point, it's a pretty good shot that we'll get it, but the county still has to vote to finalize their decision on August 18th. And at that point, we'll be in a better position to discuss the details of the grant, as well as potential start dates when we're going to get that project started. And then about two weeks ago, the borough's paving contractor, H&amp;K, completed paving of about 3.4 miles of borough roadways. And reports that I'm getting from staff and others found that they did a very nice job, and Public Works was satisfied with their work. If you recall, H&amp;K was also awarded the Irvine Street project. That's a joint project with Upper Pots Grove. And there was a pre-construction meeting this week, but I'm not sure that we really have a good indication of timing on when that's going to start yet. So we'll keep you posted on that as well. And that-
The paving is pretty amazing, I have to say. It's like butter, so thank you.
Yeah, they did, they did a nice job. They're, you know, H&amp;K's a quality outfit. They're currently working on that big turnpike expansion project as well, so.
I don't know. I mean, I used to hit my head on the top of my car every time I drove on my driveway. No, I'm serious, because there's like the way that the street is. And it's just so used to it, since I've been living there. I thought I like, my car died or something when I drove on that, it's my driveway. I thought, oh, it was ice or something. They did an excellent job. And they cleaned up, and they came back and fixed things. So I want to say thank you. And they did it really expeditiously.
Yeah, about two weeks or so.
Yeah, so.
They did a good job.
Good. Thank you.
Good.
That concludes my report.
Uh, then tell us about the fiber, yeah, fire service agreement with West Pots Grove.
I'm sorry. Justin, I'm, I apologize. I have a question about the airport. Why are you giving me that look?
Go ahead.
Can I, the fixed base operator?
Yeah.
Is, does anyone actually man the airport for people to land there? Or is that the fixed base operator?
Well, it's a, it's a public airport, so, you know, people can land there pretty much at any time during, during the day, whether the operator's there or not. However, they can't get fuel unless the operator is there.
Okay. Because that was my next question, my understanding. I've been getting some complaints. People can't refuel now.
Yeah. We're, we're trying to resolve that situation.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Our fire agreement.
All right. So over the course of the first year of this, this agreement, both municipalities seem to be very satisfied with the level of service provided. And we would like to extend that contract an additional five years with, with some minor, very minor changes to that, to that contract. We would change the payment timetable to coincide with a fixed quarterly billing schedule. So that's really just kind of like an administrative change. At the township's request, we've added a lump sum to the budget for the Pottstown Fire Chief to serve as the lead fire investigator for major fires in, in the township. The township would still have their own fire marshal, and they would, their, their person would do all the building inspections and things like that. But Chief Hand would be solicited to do the big fire investigations for them, which we anticipate to be about one to three a year, based on the activity that they have gone on over there. The funding formula, formula that we used was revised down from 11.5 to 11.2% of operational cost, because this is, the fire, the, the funding formula is based on two things, the population, as well as the number of calls that we have in the township. The 2020 census, West Pots Grove population went down, ours went up. And overall, West Pots Grove's fire calls went down in, in 2022 as well. So that gets reflected in, in the 2023 amount. But overall, the total costs for the township are not material, materially different from the original agreement. The operational costs, I think, increased by about 1.5%. So we would ask council, if they're in agreement with those changes, to have our solicitor approve, approve to draft a revised agreement. So if there are any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? All right, Dan. Put that on for Monday evening. Telesvision, Mr. Garner.
Thank you, Dan, and good evening, everyone. As council recalls, last month, I was authorized to prepare an extension or an addendum to the existing agreement with Telesvision. Telesvision operates the CCTV channels. We prepared the extension based upon your request. It would extend the terms and conditions of the current contract for an additional 24 months. Telesvision has approved the extension, and the addendum is ready for your formal approval on Monday night. So the extension would, would take it until August 1st of 2024.
Very good. Any questions, councilors? All right, we'll list that for approval Monday. And an appointment, the emergency management coordinator, Mr. Per, Mr. Keller.
Yes. So Chief Hand has really been serving as, as the lead EMC for quite a while now, and we're simply requesting to formally appoint, appoint him or recommend him as the, the actual appointment gets done by the governor.
Okay. And we'll list that for Monday. 12 is the resolution, the traffic enforcement grant application.
This is our annual grant that we do. We're requesting 120,000 for reimbursement of police wages for aggressive driving and DUI details over the next year.
Okay. Put that on. 13 is the resolution, naming Veterans Island in Memorial Park.
Yeah, so for many years, the island has been unofficially referenced as, as Veterans Island. And we're requesting that this be officially renamed in their honor. Over the past years, various organizations and, and the borough have provided funding for improvements, including security camera systems, refurbishing, relocating the World War II anti-tank gun, and new monument lighting, new plaques, and proposed murals for the newly rebranded Korean War Memorial, to really make this a prominent fixture in the community. So at this point, we'd like to kind of give it the name and the, the recognition that it deserves.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Ms. Peretti, would you like to comment at all?
We hope you all would agree that this would be a good, a good effort put forward. We have worked very hard to raise the funds to help supplement parks and wrecks in just this area of the island. And in addition to that, we also have, we're actually a legacy project for the Travis Mannion Foundation, where they come in, at least in the springtime, right before Memorial Day, and they really helped clean up the island. And we do have the Rotary come, and a lot of other service organizations, sometimes the Scouts come. And we're just trying to help out there and keep it going for the purpose it was intended to be, was an honor to our veterans, our local veterans. And I think everybody got a flyer today, okay, for Community Day, which again, will be honoring three of our local veterans. Not for just their service, but also, important part of the honor is they came home and they were of service to their community. So, thank you.
Thank you. And we'll list that for approval. Uh, I see. Panera Bread, 204 Shoemaker Road, Mr. Garner.
Yeah, thanks, Dan. I think council's aware, we've been talking about the coming of a Panera Bread restaurant to the borough. For the last two Planning Commission meetings, the Planning Commission has been reviewing plans for the project. I believe at the June meeting, they essentially approved the plan with some conditions. And at the July meeting, they reviewed a new landscaping plan and recommended approval of that. Council recalls, last month, you authorized our office to write a letter to the zoning hearing board to support the zoning relief requested by Panera Bread. I'm pleased to report that that hearing occurred last evening, and the zoning hearing board granted the zoning relief. So now that the zoning issues have been addressed, it's ripe for council to consider the plan for a preliminary final approval. You should have quite a bit of information attached to the agenda, including a plan and some review letters. If you're familiar with 204 Shoemaker Road, it's already a developed site. It's a parking area, and the 4,000 square foot Panera restaurant would be constructed on that site. There would be a drive-through, access drive, parking facilities associated with the restaurant at that location. The Planning Commission recommended the council grant the final approval of the plan. The conditions are somewhat standard. The applicants agreed to comply with the Borough Engineer Review Letter, the County Planning Commission Letter, and the Authority Engineer Review Letter. There would be a fee paid in lieu of trees. I believe that currently, the plan is nine trees, short of what's required in the ordinance. So it would be nine times 500 as a fee in lieu of, of trees. The applicant was also willing to consider a voluntary contribution to the borough. Council recalls that many of the projects up there have agreed to contribute, a contribution to a traffic improvement, which will most likely be a traffic light to aid traffic circulation in that area of the borough. The applicant has agreed to contribute $50,000 towards that traffic improvement. It was a generous contribution. There were, I believe, seven waivers that were requested as part of the project. You should have that waiver letter. I believe it was prepared by Arna Engineering, and it was dated July 20th. Planning Commission recommended approval of all those waivers that are listed in that letter. Dan, did I miss anything? I know you were present at the Planning Commission.
No, I don't think so. I think the Planning Commission did everything in its power to speed this project along, so Trinida can place her order.
I'm, I'm, I'm excited.
Okay. We got it all. Thank you.
So there would be two motions ready for Monday night with the conditions of approval, as well as granting the waivers. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to try to answer any questions council might have concerning the project.
Okay. Any questions? If not, we'll approve this Monday evening. Okay. 15, solid waste bid specs.
All right. So we are requesting approval of specifications to go out to bid for a trash and recycling and yard waste taller with a bid opening date of August 30th, so that would be in time for our September meeting. Really, the specifications, we're recommending that they be little changed from the previous version. We would be recommending a, two, two options, a three-year contract with two optional one-year renewals, or a five-year contract. year renewals, or a five-year contract, and the bidders would put in numbers for both options.
Okay. And we need to approve that, or?
Um.
I don't think so.
We would, yeah.
Authorize authorize the advertising of the bid, yes.
Oh, okay. Right, well, list that for Monday. And while I have you, Mr. Garner, 707 Hamilton Street.
Sure, I think Peggy mentioned this property in her report. You had previously approved an agreement of sale to transfer this property to the Land Bank and ultimately to Genesis, I believe, for property rehabilitation. The borough had secured a grant for some exterior weatherization improvements to this property, and the borough had put the this improvement project out for bid on two occasions, and unfortunately, on both occasions, did not receive any bids for this project. Due to the benefit of a change in state law, the law now indicates that if you put a project out for bid on two occasions and you don't get any bidders, you're allowed to begin a negotiation in order to get the work completed. In this case, the project would include exterior weatherization, which would be siding, doors, windows, and those types of items. The borough has been negotiating with Hydier Builders, and the proposed contract price for the improvements to the property would be $24,980. The reason I stated all that was, under the new law, Borough Council must discuss and publicly approve a contract of this nature where bids were not received. So that's what's on the table for the improvements to the property. Genesis obviously will rehab the property in other ways in order to have it occupied, but the borough has obtained the grant funds, and it would be certainly a benefit to to utilize those funds under these conditions. So the motion for Monday night would be to approve and authorize the execution of a weatherization contract with Hydier Builders in the amount of $24,980, and that would be through the use of the grant funds. We've received confirmation, correct, Justin, from the state that they're okay with this method, given the unusual circumstances that we didn't get bidders. Am I correct?
Yes, that is correct.
If there's, if there's no questions, that would be a motion for Monday night so we can proceed with this project.
Very good. We'll list that. And now we're at the the mid-year budget adjustments that you were more lead.
Yeah, I can take that. So really, this year, the directors did a good job maintaining their their budget targets. And overall, for the most part, the fund expenses are hitting 50% halfway through the year. Just to remind you on a mid-year budget adjustment, you can't, we can't change the bottom line of the budget, but we can change line items of a certain fund. So if there's a certain item that's running under and another one that's running over, we can shift that so that we can balance that that line item within that fund as long as the bottom line doesn't change. So that's what we've done here. Most of the changes were necessary to cover increasing costs due to inflation, most notably the cost of fuel, printing, paper, vehicle parts, expenses related to building repair and maintenance. We've also are going to look at legal expenses as well as engineering expenses that have that have gone over this year. That's not in the attachment you have now, but we'll have that for for Monday night. There is also an increase in cost due to a return to in-person meetings as well, and the details are included in your packet for review and approval on Monday night, and we'll probably send out an update before Friday.
Okay, we did have this discussion at the Finance Committee prior to this meeting, and we'll listen for action Monday. Okay, 18 is the model stormwater ordinance.
Okay, so this is an ordinance that is mandated by DEP, and this is a part of our NPDS permit compliance, where we're required to have standard ordinance language per the DEP guidelines. All municipalities have to do this by September of this year. So we went through it with our engineer, and most of the changes are are minor, and the main substance is revising revising our ordinances to account for green infrastructure and low-impact design terminologies. There's, there's two categories in the document. The first set is are the required things, things we have to do by DEP, and then the second set are optional. Given the timeline that we're on, we're going to recommend that we look at the optional requirements at a at a later date during our next permit round, but we are asking council to authorize our solicitor to incorporate the recommended changes into draft form and prepare for advertisement.
Okay, and we'll do that Monday. 19, the ordinance for attorney and collection fees for unpaid taxes and claims. Mr. Garner?
Yes, thanks, Mr. President. This maybe looks complicated, but it's it's really rather simple. Council knows that Portnoy Law Associates serves as the borough collection entity for delinquent real estate taxes and municipal claims. Due to a change in requirements from the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau, they now require an additional notice be sent to delinquent property owners or ratepayers prior to the collection process being undertaken. As a result of this requirement, we have, we are required to change our ordinance to allow Portnoy to first do that, and second of all, allow it to be charged against the delinquent rate or taxpayer. So what we're doing on Monday night is adopting an ordinance that sets forth the charge for this additional service. It reaffirms all of the charges that Portnoy is permitted to charge, and it names Portnoy as our collector since they're, they already are doing that anyway. So in addition to this ordinance, there will be minor amendments to our collection contracts, both for the delinquent municipal claims and real estate taxes, so that they're authorized to send this additional notice. So so long and short of it is, it's just a change in regulation, and we're required to change our documents to incorporate the changes and make our collection process legal. So that's what's going on. Our deadline to do this is the end of September, and everything's set for Monday night as far as action. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but it's quite a bit of work for something that's relatively minor.
Any questions? Okay, we'll list that. And while I have you, the ordinance amendments, beginning with fireworks.
Yes, if you look at the agenda, there's actually two items. It says fireworks ordinance and noise ordinance. I believe they are one and the same. The council recalls, last year, we were struggling with the state law and how we could potentially regulate the use of consumer fireworks. Last year, with the assistance of the chief and licensing and inspection, we put together an amendment to the noise ordinance that would essentially limit the times that fireworks could be discharged in the borough. We, the ordinance went into effect, and essentially, it said that, under normal circumstances, you couldn't set fireworks off after nine o'clock, except for certain holidays, which included the Fourth of July, New Year's Eve, and Memorial Day and Labor Day, those those typical types of holidays. And we put reasonable times in for when fireworks could be used on those holidays. We did that because the prior state law had no specifics in the law, in fact, questioning whether we could even restrict the use of fireworks based upon the language. Well, lo and behold, earlier this year, the state legislature did amend the ordinance, and now specifically provides and allows a municipality to regulate the times that fireworks may be permitted. Unfortunately, the times that the state law provides for permission of use of fireworks didn't quite line up with the times we selected in our local ordinance. So we're, based upon recommendation of the Ordinance Review Committee, we're going to ask council to allow us to amend the noise ordinance so that it's consistent with the parameters of the new state law, which would basically indicate that after 10 o'clock, you can't set off fireworks, except for the designated holidays. So that's the long explanation of our request to change the noise ordinance.
Very good. What about the other vacant commercial units, et cetera?
I can, I can take those. So all these changes on here, most of them anyway, are have been a long process with the Ordinance Review Committee. Many of these started at the beginning of the year, if not even earlier, and they've worked diligently on these over the past couple of months to get them to a point where they're ready to be brought to council for a recommendation. So I'll take the registration of vacant commercial units. Peggy alluded to that a little bit. And really, the main point of this is that people that are not actively marketing their their property, we want to try to compel them to do that through a vacant property fee. So vacant commercial units would have to register with LNI, submit to inspections, and pay a fee to reimburse the borough for any costs associated with vacant units based on their impact on code enforcement, police, and fire services. Program will hopefully help the borough compile and maintain a current list of commercial units for sale or for lease as well, obtain information on property values, which may be useful for tax assessment purposes, and encourage property owners to prepare vacant commercial properties for productive use, either through their sale, lease, physical improvement, or or demolition. So this would apply to commercial buildings or the commercial components of mixed-use buildings. If you recall, this is similar to what we already have in place for the vacant residential property registration fee, and this would just be expanded for commercial buildings as well. All right, so the next one is zoning regulations for downtown businesses and their hours. So the committee is recommending establishing regulations for the hours of operation of future businesses in the downtown district. This would not apply to existing businesses, but just those that that go in the future. They're recommending that restaurants and bars in the downtown district and proposing to restrict operations between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM, while most other commercial uses are proposed to restrict operations between 12:00 AM and 6:00 AM. And the full list of uses that would have the hour restrictions are attached to the agenda for your review. Okay? Zoning officer's duties and responsibilities. The committee is recommending changing to the zoning to further clarify the authority of the zoning officer, as well as to create standardized rules for the interpretation of the zoning ordinance. The effect would also be to firmly establish that only those uses expressly permitted by zoning are permitted within the district and the and the borough as a whole. So that's that one. And then dumpster for contiguous properties. This really came about by a couple requests that we had by business owners and 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 property owners. Our current rules are that you cannot have a dumpster unless unless you have seven units or or more on a property. This change would be to account for properties that are in that are in single, single ownership that are contiguous to each other, and if they had seven or more units in total, including commercial, they would be able to get their own their own dumpster. So just really trying to make it easier for them to handle their handle their trash and kind of aggregate some of those dumpster locations that we have at the back of properties. So this will allow properties to share dumpsters rather than having individual toads for the various units. And then we want, we want to include requirements in there that the dumpsters have to be screened appropriately. They also, with a fence, they also can't take up a parking space, so they're going to have to find like a grass area or a part of a drive aisle where they can make that work. And then in conjunction with that, we also looked at the definition of solid waste storage container, which we were kind of defining as a dumpster before. We've now broken that out into two different definitions, and we're defining a solid waste storage container is essentially a large-scale holding area for trash, and we would recommend limiting that to the heavy manufacturing district.
Great.
So I think that pretty much covers it. If there's any, any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
I have a question. Is that attachment attached? I don't see it. Did I just miss it?
They were sent to council.
No, I don't think it was.
They were sent, it's not on here?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was, Matt sent council a pretty detailed letter and the summary of each of those ordinances, so I think you guys got those last week, so I don't think anything was attached to the agenda, to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, I just, I just wanted to say that, I mean, there's a lot of material here on all of these things, and I know the committee's been working on this for a number of months. Some of the ordinances, such as the noise ordinance and the registration of vacant commercial units, they they would be regulatory ordinances, and if council was comfortable with moving forward with those and authorizing the preparation and advertisement of those, those would be ready within the next 30 to 60 days. Some of the changes are amendments to zoning or subdivision and land development regulations, and because of notification requirements that we would have to go through and scheduling public hearings, whenever council authorized those to be moved ahead, that would probably take 60 to 90 days till they were ready for your action. So I'm just trying to give you a timeframe, and again, it's up to you when when you're ready to move ahead with these, but but that's the timeframe that we would need to get ready to present to you for formal action. So just a little bit more background.
Okay, and we'll list that for action Monday evening, all of them. 21 is the car show, downtown survey response, Mr. Keller.
All right, so we've got a request from Red Horse. They would like to start the car shows this year at 3:00 PM, and they would also like to provide some outside food, food vendors or or food trucks. So we wanted to make sure we we talked to the downtown businesses, so we asked Pead to send out a survey to those that signed up for the on their distribution list. And of the, of the, of the people that we sent it out to, 30% responded, and in total, 68% of that said that, that yes, where they were indifferent to a 3:00 PM start time, so they seemed okay for that. And then 75% said that, that yes, were indifferent to food truck vendors somewhere in the area of the Hunter Block of of High Street. So based on the business responses, I think we would recommend approving this request.
Okay.
I have a question.
Question.
Is that every business that you send that survey out to in the downtown area?
No, it's whoever signed up for Pead's email list.
Okay, thank you.
Which should be, I mean, really, it should be every business, you know, if you want to.
But it's probably not.
Be in the know. You should really sign up for that, so.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, anything we need to do for this?
Yeah, we would just need to amend their application or and approve it with the new time.
All right, so that can be amended for our approval Monday?
Yeah.
Very good. Let's do that. And Harb approvals, 882 East High.
Yeah.
And 53 North Hanover.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're both attached.
Yep.
And I think 882, they wanted to remove soffit and capping and replace the roof and patio floor. The Harb voted to approve that as submitted. And then 53, they want to remove existing slate roofing at the rear section of the building and install decking and GAF shingles, and the, our Harb made a motion to approve that one as well.
Okay, we'll go on with that. 23 Harb, these are administratively approved.
Yep.
And then board vacancies. EAC, we, two, three-year terms.
I believe.
Any applicants?
Yeah, I believe we did see, receive one, Lisa Miller, who would like to be reappointed.
Okay. That's the only one?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, and for construction code?
It's still out there, as far as I know.
And zoning hearing board?
It's the same.
Same, okay. We'll deal with that Monday. Red Horse, do you work at Euro Car Show?
All right, in conjunction with the European Car Show, that's going to happen that weekend, Red Horse would like to close East Third Street from Herb Alley to Hanover Street from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And then I guess after that, they would move over to the main location.
All right. List that. List that, and go to Windcroft, they want to close the road?
Yeah, this, they do this every year. They'd like to close in front of the school on Rosedale from 4:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m.
Okay, same as every year. List that. Halloween parade, the street closure on October 22nd.
Yes, so this is, again, on a Saturday. It'll be from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m., from Bailey to York Street.
On High Street.
On High, yeah, on High Street. So I think it might be a little bit later than it was last year.
Okay. Well, list that. And now, any citizens that want to comment? Anyone online?
Uh, no, there were not.
Just give a small comment on EAC. I don't know if this is a citizen's comment, but we did actually have a meeting, a quorum this past week.
Oh, wow.
So, and hopefully, I've got some, some people who are looking to get a little bit more engaged.
Okay.
And, and as part of that, you know, looking at things, we've talked about, you know, sustainability information. And we cannot do something that's really very constructive without a little more engagement by either some council or staff. So I just wanted to kind of give you guys a little heads up on that. You know, dropped a note to, to Justin and Doug, trying to get a little bit more information on a few of the details along the way. But, but I just thought it fair to sort of mention it, mention it here.
Okay.
And, you know, think about if anybody wants to get a little bit more engaged or has any issues, that might be sort of a good topic to put in the direction of the EAC. We will, we will try to do something constructive, but we, we're not constructive in a vacuum.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may, I'm happy to act, Jim and I talked, I'm happy to act as a liaison, because I'm also on the Montgomery County Regional Planning Climate Action Committee, which coincides with Pottstown's in it, with our sustainability plan. So if someone from council can't go, I can go to those meetings.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, it, it ties right in. One of the things is that we've gone and looked at, I mean, Pottstown has, has adopted and re-adopted a sustainability plan. And yet, we try to look at, so what has come of it? And we can do the same thing. We can write up a plan or a resolution that has nothing measurable and no particular goal or, or action. Or we can try to be a little more constructive.
Okay, good.
All right, thank you. Next, Ron Williams, please.
It's like sitting there, just, you know, listening to you guys. I don't know, I just wanted to say something.
Fred?
Being quiet. Few months back, quite a few months back, of course, we, the council opened the door for discussion about the racing vehicles on the streets. I haven't heard anything since then, but I just want to let you know that this, this issue is continuing. Since the weather warmed up, I got a couple of people down the street who really like to test their motorcycles out. You know, it's, Walnut Street is, seems to be a, a testing to get over to Hanover Street as fast as you can. I hope that this subject hasn't died. And, you know, I've visited, actually, I've been all over the country. I just got back from Colorado and Wyoming. And I've visited a number of little towns and suburbs around some of the cities. And, and there are these speed strips just about everywhere. I go down to Wilmington, Delaware. A lot of the outer communities have speed strips, or whatever you call them, little bumps on the road. And it helps. I mean, I just hope this subject hasn't, hasn't gotten lost in time. That's it.
Thank you. Diane Chapman, please.
I'm going to try to keep this real brief. I'm glad I came tonight. I ran into Madam Mayor last night and spoke to her in detail. I'm going to keep this real brief. I became aware in a rental property, and coming here, I came into the city hall to speak to the clerk, because I became aware that's a property I was living in. The landlord, I may, I contacted my landlord about something that happened where I was. And I, and as soon as I mentioned the word that what he was doing was illegal, he backed off. So I came down here, and sure enough, he wasn't, city manager and you guys, he wasn't, the home wasn't registered to be a rental property. Then he told me I had no business letting the, you guys do inspection every two years. I know the laws, I know the borough, everything that, you know, know, know the law of where you live. I'm well versed in law. The property wasn't registered to be rented. He was acting as if the home was being lived in by himself. How dare I allow the city inspector into the home? Who did I think I was? All types of, everything that's been done to me since I've been in the home has been in retaliation. And then I asked for a police escort to go into my home, and the police department treated me like I was a piece of dirt. And now, next week, I've got to be in court to answer. The man in the home assaulted me, and I am going to court next week to answer criminal charges, where a five-foot, 10-inch, 200-pound man physically assaulted me. And I have been so badly treated by the police department because, oh, I'm absolutely crazy, but yet I'm working with the Alcohol Beverage Control Board against one of Pottstown's favorite landlords, Frank Sotero, who's got his 14-year-old daughter behind a bartending bar. I am clean and sober. I've worked in the community quietly to try to get rid of our drug and alcohol problem. As a matter of fact, I've become completely aware, I went to the police department today to have a narcotics officer get in touch with me, because I'm so well-trusted in the community, that I now know a drug dealer, I now know how he's dealing his drugs, because the community trusts me, because I just am that well-trusted in the community. And I am clean and sober a long time. The way I was treated at the festival last night by two police officers was completely despicable. Your police department needs to learn to treat everybody with dignity and respect. I came here for medical reasons. I am 68 years old.
Your time's up, ma'am.
And I was treated horribly by your police department. They told me I needed mental health help. Now, something very tragic happened to me a month ago.
Ma'am, that's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
That concludes public comment.
Okay. Counselors. Counselor Kirkland, anything?
No comments, thank you so much.
Okay, Counselor Paulus. Okay. Nothing. Counselor Lindsay.
Okay, so, I was at Monday, Pottstown Community Action had their meeting on, what's that, Walnut? And we, you know, talked about some things like, you know, going in the community, cleaning up, and that's what we do. So on our way, so when we was leaving, a group of us left, and we stopped past this house, and I was like, this is nice, this is a nice house. Looked in the door, guess whose house that was? I was like, this house should be on the house tour for Go4th. And just so happened, we peeped in the house, and Ron's wife came out, because she seen us looking at the house. But we had got a tour. It was cute. When she came out, we seen the backyard, it's really nice. They got a little barn, it's, it's really nice, it's, it's nice back there. And then she showed us the house, and she gave us a little history tour, and then we left. So I was like, I said, tell Ron to come to the meeting, because I'm going to say we came to his house. It was nice, it was nice, so. And I was like, I, I didn't even know, I said, he lived right here? I didn't know that, all this time I came past this house. So speaking of cleanup, so PC, Pottstown Community Action, and Hope was wrong, a couple weeks ago, we went to the 400 block of High Street and did some cleanup on a Saturday morning. And we did, you know, we came out there and we cleaned on the other side across the street from Missions First. They, the merchants did not come out, I'm going to tell you, they did not come out to help us. Neither did the residents. But we were out there, and we planted some flowers, and we got all the cigarette butts, there was a lot of cigarette butts, y'all need to start with the cigarette butts, there was a lot of them. And so we came out there, we, we cleaned up and everything, and I want to think that those two organizations for that. I went two days later to check, just to see if it was okay. Oh, and then let me tell you this, Missions First side, over there across the street, when we went there, it was clean as a whistle. You could eat off the floor over there. Anyway, so I came back two days later, and it was a mess. It was a hot mess. And do y'all know what hot mess means? It was horrible. So I went up and down the street fussing, saying some foul words, because I was upset, because I went before work, because y'all know I drive a bus, and if y'all don't know that, I do. And I went before work, I could have been getting me some sleep, but I came out and I did some community service, and I was hot. So I went into the smoke shop, and I said, can I get a trash bag? Can you give me a peg, so I can get these people out here to clean? The next day, no, I want to say two more days later, I went at night after I got off from work. And I guess I fussed so much, this one lady, she had her broom, and she was out there sweeping. So I did touch one person. But my point to this long story is, is that if I come back again, if I come back again, I'm, I'm going to get those residents, I'm going to start knocking on y'all doors, I'm going to wake y'all up 9:00, 10:00 o'clock in the morning, because if I got to get up there, clean y'all neighborhood, because y'all not coming, cleaning up Maplewood, I'm going to knock on the doors, I'm just going to let y'all know that. Okay, so I'm done fussing about that. Okay. The paving, yes, the paving is amazing. Jackson Street, my car was going, you know the dun-duns? I call them the dun-duns. You know how you're driving on the highway, and you kind of shift over here and go da-da-da-da? That's how Jackson was. I, and I got off from work, they must have did while I was at work. I come home, I said, wait a minute, I, I didn't do, what happened? It was smooth, it was, it was amazing. So my car was like, mommy, thank you. I said, I didn't have nothing to do with, but I know, I appreciate it too. It was, it was nice to go down a nice, smooth street, and a lot of the streets are done. So thank you, guys, for this paving. Okay, wait a minute, hold on, I'm almost done. Water Wednesday, so it was nice, I went there to Rupert Elementary this morning, hang out with Andy, that was nice, National Night Out was good, too. And don't forget, my block party is Saturday, rain or shine, we'll be out there in the rain, from, it's 900 block of Spruce Street, from 5:00 to 8:00. And I think I've said everything.
Thank you.
Oh, and Panera Bread. Sorry. Oh, Panera Bread, thank you.
What are you ordering?
I don't know, but I said, when this get blessed, that Michael was going to be my date, so we going, I don't know where we going.
Okay.
Okay, now I'm done, I'm sorry, I'm done.
Okay, Vice President Lebedin.
I like the paving, but I don't know any difference, because I have a four-by-four. I know you got a lowrider, but I just, right over top. That's it.
I'm glad I remembered, thanks, Don. September 24th is the Veterans Community, Community Day, which was mentioned, but I was asked to remind everyone, and I asked Don to be my backup to remind everyone, and he did not. So, September 24th, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., 251 Manitani Street. And I hope to see you all at Trinitas Block Party. I was told I need to show up early, because I'm being put to work. So I hope to see you all on Saturday, that's all I have.
Okay.
Flyover, right?
Yeah, that's, flyover?
Yeah, yeah, that's what we saw. Great.
Getting a flyover for your block party?
No.
Yes, yes, I am, yes. Yes, I am, I.
No, I have nothing. That's where you were going.
Oh, okay. Uh, let me see, what could I say? Well, normally, when road surfaces are not so good, everybody's yelling at Mr. Yerger from Public Works. So I think we should all give a round of applause to Doug and his department for choosing and directing the right people to treat our roads as they should be. No, that, I, I get a lot of comments from constituents, normally they're complaining about something, but actually, Doug, I've gotten a couple of calls, particularly about Masters Street and, and Jackson Street, and I can go down the list, and they're really happy with the progress. Oh, thank you, sir.
My car is really.
I have nothing more for this evening, meeting adjourned. Night, everyone.